...stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Have it.
Our first order of business will be the inauguration of the forty-sixth Ferndale City Council. And to swear in the new members of the city council, Judge Longo, our chief judge of the forty-third district court is here with us this evening. Take your time, Judge.
All right. How would we like to do this?
Well, go in the order that's on the agenda, which means I will start.
I, David Coulter...
I, David Coulter...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of this state...
The Constitution of this state...
And the charter of the city of Ferndale.
And the charter of the city of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of mayor in and for the city of Ferndale...
Of mayor in and for the city of Ferndale.
County of Oakland...
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan...
State of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Congressman Pollock.
Thank you, sir.
I, Greg Pollock...
I, Greg Pollock...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of this state...
The Constitution of this state.
And the charter of the city of Ferndale...
And the charter of the city of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of city council member in and for the city of Ferndale.
Of city council member in and for the city of Ferndale.
County of Oakland...
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan to the best of my ability.
And state of Michigan to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And Mayor Protem Melanie Piana.
Do you raise your right hand?
I, Melanie Piana...
I, Melanie Piana...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state...
The Constitution of this state.
And the charter of the city of Ferndale.
And the charter of the city of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of city council member...
Duties of city council member.
In and for the city of Ferndale.
And in for the city of Ferndale.
County of Oakland...
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan...
And state of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Before we proceed, I will give my colleagues who have just been sworn into office again the opportunity, if they have any comments to make, to start off their new term with. If you have anything you'd like to share, I'll give you that opportunity.
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve another term as council member, and I will, as stated, I will try to serve this position to the best of my ability for the citizens of Ferndale.
And likewise, wanted to express my gratitude for a third term. I'm going to have twelve years at the end of this term, and only a couple other council members have done that in the past, Mike Lennon, Scott Galloway, the ones that I have had interactions with. And so I've always, you know, taken my role very seriously, and you have that commitment from me going forward the next four years, and always trying to find the right solutions for us to move forward as a community. I'm all in, always have been, and I look forward to a really great next four years. Thank you.
And I would just say, that was my fifth swearing-in as mayor, but it never gets old. And I take it very seriously and humbly. I love this community, and my passion for serving it has not waned in those five swearing-in ceremonies. I'm proud to represent a community that I think truly, we say it in our vision statement, but I really think it's true, that we can be a role model for other communities in this state and country about how to be a progressive, and sustainable, and modern, and successful, fiscally responsible community. And so I'm proud to serve the residents again. I thank them for their support, and I'm proud to and excited to work with this council. Part of the reason I ran again is because I work with four awesome people, and I couldn't be more proud to work with all of you and call you colleagues. So, thank you, and looking forward to another term. Thank you. And with that, Marnie, would you call the role of the forty-sixth Ferndale City Council?
Councilmembers Leaks May...
Here.
Martin...
Here.
Pollock...
Here.
Piana...
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. And we have a quorum, and a full house, in fact. All right, the next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, Marnie, would you call the role?
Councilmembers Martin...
Yes.
Pollock...
Yes.
Piana...
Yes.
Leaks May...
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, yes, thank you. The agenda is approved. Now, one of our favorite things that we get to do is to meet our new police officers. And so Chief Collins and Captain Pelazolo, I assume that you're doing the honors? At least I assume that's what they're here, or someone's in big trouble.
This time, I did not do it.
Test, test, good, good. All right, so we have three brand-new officers who started with us about three weeks ago. They're all in their first phase of training, and I'm going to bring them up one by one and give you a little background on them. First one I'd like to introduce is Lauren Zyrowski. Come on up, please. Lauren grew up in Almont. She went to Saginaw Valley, right? She got her bachelor's degree there. She then went right into her master's program. During that time, she was a student dispatcher with the police department there on campus, and then a supervisor in that same area. To say that she is driven and has laser focus is an understatement. So, ladies and gentlemen, Lauren. Brandon, come on up. Brandon Cezniak, grew up in Mount Clemens. His father was a police officer retired from Mount Clemens PD. After he graduated from high school, he went to the community college in Macomb, and then decided he wanted to go into the military. Spent three years in the United States Marine Corps, did a tour in Afghanistan, got out, came back, finished his degree with Oakland University, and he also has laser focus, and we're proud to have him. Welcome aboard. Carlo, come on up. Carlo Di Elka. Was born in the Philippines, came to the United States when he was thirteen years old. So diversity is a bigger picture than some of us think. Mr. Carlo went into the United States Navy. He served eight years as a corpsman. If you know anything about a corpsman, they're attached to the Marine Corps. He fought some tough battles in Iraq, is a Purple Heart recipient, achievement medal with the V for valor. He worked at the VA when he got out, put himself through school. He's married, has four kids, is it four, six? Five kids? And like the other two, put themselves through the police academy on their own dime, and we are very fortunate to have these three new members with us.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. And I will note that with Carlo and Brandon, about one-fourth of our police department are veterans, so we're pretty proud of that.
Before we're done, we also have some other business to take care of. I'd like to call up Dan Cusdale, who just, I think, ran out looking for his wife and daughter that are running around.
There they are.
Come on up, Dan. Dan Cusdale was hired by the Ferndale Police Department in two thousand and eight. He worked general patrol for many years. He was one of the unfortunate individuals that was laid off in two thousand and ten. We were very happy to get him back once everything stabilized. A lot of that has to do with our folks up here that could stabilize our city budget. We were happy to get him back. He worked very hard once he got back, so much so is that he got assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team in two thousand and seventeen. Then he decided to take the sergeant's test, and we had to cut that short. So he missed out on probably one of the best experiences of his life to take over one of the, what I found to be one of the best experiences in the police department is to be that first-line supervisor. What we will be asking from him will be a lot. He finally got to the point where he could work a day shift scenario, and now he gets promoted, and he will find himself, while right now he's in training, but he will find himself back in the midnight shift world. So we're happy to have him as a brand-new sergeant. His wife is here with his two sons, and they would like to, she will pin his sergeant's badge on him ceremoniously...
Excellent.
If you would, please. I told her the secret how to do it, and...
It's a lot of pressure, I know.
And lastly, if I have Tim Andre come up. Previously Sergeant Andre, Timmy was, Timmy came to us, he was what we called one of the ninety-sixers. For those of you that weren't around in nineteen ninety-six, we had an enormous retirement that occurred. We lost twenty-six percent of the police department, and we had a huge hiring. Tim was in that whole group. Many of those people have moved on, some for not the greatest of reasons. But Tim was one of the great...
Really?
Open and honest. Tim was not one of the people we had to worry about. Tim has always been a very hard worker. He was our assignment to DEA for four years, where he worked out with the federal government for a while. Tim tried very hard several times to take the sergeant's exam, and yelled at me and thought it was fixed for a while, but I think we came to an understanding that it was all on the up and up. He became a sergeant in two thousand and fifteen. He also went, after working the day shift for some time, took those stripes and went to nights, worked very hard as a sergeant, and was able to, with different promotions and different movement, he finally got back to days, and then he took the lieutenant's exam, and now he's back on nights again. I'd like to call up his dad, if I would. He would like to ceremoniously pin his lieutenant badge on him. We're very pleased to have, as much as I tease Timmy, he's probably one of the brightest people I know, very smart individual, and he will go far. We're very happy to have him promoted to the rank of lieutenant.
Chief, I would like to ask Sergeant Andre if he's willing to go to another Tigers game. We have four, we have four years to figure that out, and I don't know, the bus is faster now. It's called fast tran, a fast bus. So just so everybody knows, he challenged me.
That's the kind of guy Tim Andre is, though. When Councilwoman Piana was first elected, she wanted to have some outreach to the police department. Somebody had to take the hit to go on a bus ride down to the Tiger game.
I don't know, I think it was challenged. I was challenged to dare to go with the police department to the Tigers game, so. Thank you.
That just proves you never know what you're going to have to do in this role, but I do want to say to our new sergeant, our new lieutenant, and to our new police officers, congratulations. Please be safe. We have high expectations of you. Our community has great expectations for you, and I know you'll do well in your job. So thank you and congratulations. All right, moving on now to call to audience. And this is your opportunity, if you're here with us in the audience and you would like to address city council, your opportunity to do so on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. But if you'd like to address council on any issue of your choosing, come on up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and three minutes are yours to chat with council about anything you would like. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Warham Block, and I'm at five-five-five West Drayton.
I'm five-five-five Leroy. We have something in common. Easy number to remember, isn't it?
Yeah, very easy. No, my question, I've been to DPW a couple times requesting the reasons why the streets are not being plowed or salted, and I've always, they said they'll look into it, but I've gotten to the point going, I want to talk to you guys about that. I mean, there's been a few snows, and enough snow that, you know, that the streets need to be plowed, and they're still, tonight, driving on down Drayton, it's still not plowed. In the past...
From the previous storm.
Correct.
I mean, realizing, we just had snow this morning, but from the previous storm you were saying your street did not get plowed.
Yeah, from over the weekend, yeah, or last week. Previously, in years past, the streets have been, boy, cleared off really quick. Something, I just want to find out what's going on this year.
And I don't think we have a DPW representative here...
No, we were sick today and we couldn't have it.
Because our DPW director is sick this evening.
We'll get somebody.
We'll get you an answer, in fact.
You guys something to look into.
Yeah, it absolutely is. And so, in fact, if you want to give your contact information to Marnie, our clerk, we'll make sure that somebody follow up with you and at least give you an explanation.
Well, I gave it to somebody at the desk today.
Okay.
And, now, they have my name and number.
I appreciate it. Our director is sick this evening, or else he could tell you in person.
You probably knew I was going to show up.
No. No, he's always happy to talk to folks, so. Sorry about that inconvenience, and we'll make sure someone follows up.
Well, it's just that for safety reasons and everything else, assaulting at the stop signs, you know, is needed. And they salt Liversnoy and Pinecrest and that, but the side streets are not being salted at the, at the stop signs. And I've been told that, oh, the salt doesn't work in the cold weather. It works on Liversnoy, it works on Pinecrest, why can't it work on the side street? Okay.
Fair question. Thank you, sir. We'll get you an answer. Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business. We have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first one is the R-two zoning district text amendment, and Jordan, you're going to introduce that item.
That's correct, Mayor Council. Thank you very much. So this, the first of the two public hearings, this is Schedule Regulations Ordinance Amendment for our R-two zoning districts. This is something in line with what's called for to the two thousand and seventeen update of the city master plan. Essentially, what you're looking at, to boil it down, is moving the minimum lot size, minimum buildable lot size from fifty feet to thirty-five feet, and the minimum lot area from six thousand to four thousand square feet. And this is done according to the master plan, sort of to allow density in the R-two, R-three districts, and R-three has already been done, so R-two's sort of next in line.
So with that, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public and ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council on this public hearing item this evening. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask if there's questions or comments of council on this item.
I'll move the city council approve the amendments to Article Three, Section twenty-four to forty-three, as summarized below with the following findings as listed in the packet.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Martin and supported by Pollock. Any further discussion?
Through the chair, Jordan, can you just sort of summarize in layman's terms what this is trying to encourage?
Absolutely. Good question. So essentially, what this allows you to do with a smaller minimum buildable lot size that essentially allows more houses to be built closer together. Currently, at a fifty, a fifty-square-foot lot size, that, you know, that limits your density. So one of the things with the master plan, you have your R-one, R-two, and R-three. R-one is sort of your lowest-density, single-family. R-two and R-three increase in density essentially as you get closer to commercial corridors. So essentially, what this allows is create a bit of a buffer zone between sort of busier levels of activity and sort of your lowest-intensity, single-family residential.
Okay, and just the counteract, what I just heard, you said larger lot size, but I want to make sure that people know that it's not Bigfoot homes, that this isn't allowing that to happen.
Correct.
So it's an in-between based upon what we're hearing from residents of how they want to expand their garage or add an addition onto the back of their house or to the side of their house that allows them to do that.
That's mainly what this is addressing, yes.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollock...
Yes.
Piana...
Yes.
Leaks May...
Yes.
Martin...
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. We have a second public hearing this evening, which is the accessory building structures and usage text amendment, and Jordan, you're going to do that one as well?
Yes. And this one along the lines of, so the last point that Mayor Protem made was actually a good segue, because this is sort of along the same lines. Essentially, what you're looking here is to reduce the side yard setback allowed for accessory buildings and structures from five feet to three feet as long as fire-rated construction is present. You're having a situation where we're seeing in the, particularly in building permits, where old garages, let's say they came down for some reason or another, and you've got a pad that's already poured, you are sort of forced to deconstruct that pad to meet the new, the three-foot set, or, I'm sorry, the five-foot setback requirement. So Michigan Building Code actually allows three feet as long as you're fire-rated, so that kind of strikes the balance of safety. But this is allowing folks to build those accessory structures in a way that allows them to maximize their square footage without endangering safety.
With that introduction, I will also open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to address council on this? This being a public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Dennis August and fifteen fifty Spencer. The width of the lots that you're talking about, what is the width going to be now? You know, as far as sizes and that, because you're, that's all got to be included when you're putting in accessory buildings and that. Then how far back are you coming off of the power lines and that? Because there's been, there's been, in my experience, working here in Ferndale over the past twenty-five years, is that it tends to vary when it comes to power lines to the back of an accessory building, a garage, shed, it don't matter. And then, now you say three feet instead of five feet. Now, when I built my garage, it was three feet from the side, from my neighbor's side, okay? But it was also fourteen feet from the back, because there was the alleyway, which is no longer in use, plus the power line there. So I had to add on, I believe it was six feet to the eight feet already. So what kind of easements are we actually talking here? And as, really have to, you know, deal with lot size, and that is an important part when we take our drawings, and when builders like me take our drawings into the building department, we've got to have the lot size there, too. Now, you're talking about congesting more buildings together to get more people in here. Well, my lot size had to be at least forty feet before I could even build just a sixteen-by-twenty garage, you know? So I mean, what are the easements from the backside of the building, from the backside? You know, because you just mentioned three feet. Now, that's got to be the side.
It is the side.
You know, but are they changing the easements from the backs now?
No, this is, this is side. Lot sizes are staying.
Only side yards, Dennis, yeah, not...
Side yards.
And it actually...
Not the east, yeah. Not the setback from the back.
It actually, sir, one of the things that you mentioned, sort of, a lot of times when some of the older homes and older structures were put up, they were three feet, like you said. And what happened, though, when the ordinance changed to five, essentially that creates a hardship on homeowners. So let's say, again, like the garage comes down, or you want to make an addition or replace it, they would have had to have been forced to go to five feet instead of staying at the three that it was before. So this is trying to really correct that.
Okay.
Yeah.
My next, then getting back to the width of the lot now, which plays an important part, too, of any kind of construction, any kind, and that is, what is going to be the minimum width of the lot of the property? Is it still forty feet?
It'll depend on the, it'll depend on the residential zone. I can actually pull that up, actually, if you don't mind me scooting in real here. So, and we can also talk about this offline if you'd like, but in general, I can show you that offline. I don't want to tie up that, but basically, the lot sizes are going to stay the same, and this is really driven by Michigan Building Code. So they kind of, they hammer out essentially that three feet is a safe enough distance on the side yard only for those lot sizes.
Thank you, Dennis. Yep. Anyone else like to address council during this public hearing? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up now to my colleagues on council. Is there any questions or comments on this item?
I would just like to make comments. From the BZA, we've seen a lot of residents come in asking for variances because the, their lot size is thirty-five feet, and they want to put in an acceptable-sized garage, but it takes up most of their yard. So then you're dealing into the percentage of permeable space, you know, for them to build a decent-sized garage. So moving it back from five feet to three feet allows them to build a garage that they don't have to then come to the BZA for a variance. We've been seeing a number of that. And the other thing that Justin, I'm sorry, Jordan mentioned was the pads, you know, existing pads. People wanted to be able to build on the same concrete pad, and, you know, they need a variance for that with the current ordinance.
So in that instance, it used to be three feet, and we changed it to five, so it was three feet at one point?
If I may, I built my garage in two thousand and seven, and it was three feet.
It was three feet back.
Yes, and I believe in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, it moved to five feet. And so now we're moving it back to three feet. With the condition of a fire-retardant...
Correct.
...wall against the property line.
That's right. Other comments or discussion? Yes, sir? Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that, but I do have one more question that popped up. Now, we've got some lots out there that are really long, and every time I've had a building project, and I'm talking about St. Louis and La Prairie, right?
Right.
Long in there. Every time I've had a building project, and that, that hundred feet back, we couldn't use that, you know, when we went, when I went to build. That part didn't count. We had to just use basically what was up close in front, and that, and for as far as setbacks went and stuff like that, okay? So you get a lot of those properties, you know, well, I shouldn't say a lot, but there's a few of them there that got some really deep backyards, and you've got all that backyard space there, but you could only go so far back from the house. You know, that's what I'm getting at, is that, you know, it didn't matter if it was a shed at that time when I was, when I was over there, a shed or a garage. And that is, is we could only go back so far from the house. And then you have seventy-five, eighty, ninety feet back there. You know, are we going to, are you going to be able to take and move these buildings back farther and utilize that?
Well, this is really only dealing with the side yard. Now, I don't know those specific properties, but we can definitely talk offline and kind of figure it. Typically, the way we'll work it out is obviously the BZA is there as a last resort. If there is a weird circumstance, we acknowledge that some parcels are just weird, and they have situations. That's why the BZA exists, is one release valve. But sometimes, if it wouldn't qualify for a variance, but there's wiggle room in the code, we can work that out. So our building official, Scott Worthington, is really great at that, sort of finding those gray areas. So I'll make sure it could be one of my cards, and we can talk about them, for sure.
Good. All right, other comments or questions of council? I believe we need a motion.
I move to, I amend, I move to approve the amendment to Article Four, Section twenty-four dash one-eight-three, one E and F, as summarized in the packet below. I move to, I amend, I move to approve the amendment to Article 4, Section 24-183, 1E and F, as summarized in the packet below.
Support.
All right, moved by Pollocka, supported by Piana. I need additional final comments. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. Moving on now to the next item of business, which should be the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are those that are considered routine by council, and we enact in one motion unless council, someone on council pulls one of those items to the regular agenda. So let me read the Consent Agenda items now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held December 18th, 2017. The 6:30 and 7 o'clock minute meetings, I should add. Item B is the approval to confirm the reappointment to city boards and commissions. And item C is the approval of the bills and payroll as presented by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, and in a nose, we'll give it to Martin as a support, all right.
Everyone gets to buy a nose.
Buy a nose.
I never get to buy a nose.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I would just like to point out on B, that if anyone's looking at this, the Parks and Recreation Board Commission is not on here, and that is because all of their terms continue into the next year. So it's, none of the terms are expiring this year.
Okay. I'd just like to extend a thanks to everyone on that list who is willing to serve.
That's right.
It can be a very thankless activity, but we're so grateful they're there, so.
Thankless activity, but we're doing a better job of thanking them with our new volunteer appreciation, which we will do again this year, right? Excellent, because we can't thank those folks enough. Well said, Councilman Martin. So we have a motion and a support. Any further discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton?
Yes, thank you. Consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the appointment of Peter Dorn Tacy Jr. to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2020. And is Peter here? Oh, yep, sure.
Mayor, council, I'll just quickly say on Peter's behalf, our chair Doug Weiner is actually going to be moving out of state in a few months. And so a colleague of his at ACOM, he recommended to consider applying. Peter is that colleague, and he is immensely qualified. He does environmental assessment work, he's been doing that for almost as long as I've been alive. So I think he'll be a fantastic condition to the, to the Brownfield Authority, and that group is really firing on all cylinders right now. And I think having, having Peter on the team will really round out the skill set on the BRAs. And we have probably three to five applications that will probably come our way in 2018, so having all hands on deck will be great.
Is there a motion?
I move to confirm the appointments of Peter Tacy to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2020. We have amazing skill set on our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which has been increasingly been more busy in the last two years with more real estate movement in our area. And so I welcome Mr. Tacy to join our board.
And I support that. Motion?
All right, moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Any further discussion or comments? All right, if not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton?
Yes, thank you, that appointment is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item B is the consideration to appoint Joe Bailey and Kelly Katz to the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission for terms ending December 31st, 2019.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce this. We have two excellent candidates for the Arts and Culture Commission. Joe Bailey, I think many of you know, besides working at the Mosaic Youth Theater in Detroit, is one of the founding partners of the Ringwald, and so has added a lot already to the culture of this community. So we're really grateful to have him join, and it's a skill set in the performing arts that we tend to be on the weaker side of in that commission. And Kelly Katz is a visual artist, resident of Ferndale, and is also an excellent candidate willing to serve. She's been a studio manager and a gallery director and brings just a terrific skill set. So I'd like to encourage we accept both of them.
Is that a motion?
I would like to move that we appoint Joe Bailey and Kelly Katz to the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission for terms ending December 31st, 2019. I don't know, are either of them here? I don't think so, okay.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Is there any other comments or discussion on this, on this appointment, these appointments? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton?
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on now, speaking of appointments, this is what we do every two years. We go through the list of council appointments to boards and commissions, for those boards and commissions that council members will serve on for the term of the next two years. And council, you should have all received a chart in your packets, which I have here somewhere. And let's see, we've got these in probably the order that we need to do these, I do believe, correct? Same order as our charts. So I guess what we'll do is we'll go through these, one through 19, and people can express their interest in them. And, well, I'm going to ask Dan, and then do we have to vote on each one, or then we can do the whole?
Do a single motion at the conclusion, unless there's some type of issue.
Unless we get to one that needs a separate vote, and then we'll do that? Okay, so let's do that, all right. So we'll, very good. So we'll start with the appointment of Mayor Protem.
Well, why don't I start, because I'm the current one, and I wanted to say thank you for the support of council for the last two terms or four years of being Mayor Protem. I'm certainly interested in going forward again, but know that we have a process here that I think somewhat unclear about how to go about it, but open for discussion, but putting my name down to continue forward.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would be interested in being Mayor Protem for the next term. Historically, we've generally rotated every two years that position, and last year I was asked if I was interested in it, and I really wanted to have a couple more years as a council member under my belt. And I think I've gained a lot of experience over the last four years. I know there has been some question to my professionalism in social media, for example. I, I will say that I tend to speak my mind on things socially, but professionally, in this role, I always try to remain professionally in the role of council member, and I will continue to do so if you support me as Mayor Protem.
Is there anyone else who is interested in the position of Mayor Protem? All right, so how did?
Oh, and through the chair, I just want to mention, going forward for the next two years, you can count on my leadership going forward as well, but I also have some interesting roles representing Ferndale at a more statewide level on the Michigan Municipal League, and just wanted to put it out there.
So how do we do this now, Dan?
I think, Mary, you may want to see if somebody makes a motion, and we should probably, given this, go item by item, at least with respect to this one, if somebody wants to make a motion.
So someone needs to make a motion, and it's important, okay. So is there a motion for the appointment of Mayor Protem?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Greg Pollocka, Mayor Protem, and I just want to say, Melanie, you've done an excellent job. I have no qualms about the work that you've done. I like the tradition of rotating the role around. I served as it in between your two terms as Mayor Protem, and I thought last year made a ton of sense to repeat that because of your progression and great work at the statewide level. I think you're more than well-established now, though, without a title, you know, in your own skill set, and so I'd like to return back to that rotational tradition.
I have no problem with that either. I'm leaning in tonight.
Is there a support?
There's support.
It's been moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Further discussion?
I would just like to add that if you do vote for me for Mayor Protem, I want to say that, Melanie, it will be very hard to fill your shoes over the last two years and the two previous years that you served. You are an incredible councilwoman, an incredible representative of this city, and
Giving me a Golden Globe?
A Cecil B. DeMille?
Because I'm going to start the music. No, I'm kidding.
I'm not nominated for president.
But seriously, you have done, you have done an incredible role as Mayor Protem.
I appreciate that, and thank you.
Other comments or? It has been moved and supported. Final comments? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulton?
Yes, thank you. I'm not aware of any others that will require a vote. If there is, we can certainly address those at the time, but I'm going to just continue down the aisle and ask people to express their interest in these as we go through, in the most, as that being the most expedient manner to do this. Agenda Committee, which I serve on by the virtue of my office.
And I also serve By virtue of my position.
By virtue of, virtue, okay.
And are you interested in continuing?
I'm interested in continuing.
I'd like to challenge you for that, no, I'm kidding.
So I'm going to, because I'm going to write all these down so that we can do a final motion, okay. Board of Zoning Appeals, which is currently, Councilman Pollocka?
I do currently serve on that position, and I really enjoy it. I would like to continue on in that role.
I'd like you to continue on in that role, too.
Anyone else interested in the BZA?
No.
Okay. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which is currently, Melanie?
Yeah. I'll stay on as well.
Is there anyone else that hasn't, oh, yeah. Is there anyone else that has an interest in serving on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority?
No.
All right. Not that there's anything wrong with that.
No, nothing wrong with it.
We have our favorites.
The Capital Improvement Plan Committee is currently Pollocka and Piana.
I would like to stay on that. I really enjoy working on the CIP.
I enjoy working on it, too, but I've had some scheduling challenges this past year, so I'll put it on the table if anybody is interested. If not, I will continue on. I'm a
When, when in, when does it meet?
It depends with
As needed?
It's usually a daytime meeting as well, because it's with staff.
Yeah. So I'm not opposed, just know that I'm hit or miss sometimes on it, and I wanted to be open about that.
Stay.
Okay.
We'll excuse you. The Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, I serve on that by virtue of being mayor, so no
And I actually am the chair of that one, and it meets at 7:00 a.m.
Yes.
Quarterly. You're welcome.
Please continue on.
And we are in an enviable position of being well-funded, so I'd like to stay there. Make sure we continue to be
All right, anyone else? No. So this one is an interesting one. The Ferndale Public School Superintendent Advisory Committee, which has not really been an active committee, I'm not even sure how it was formed. Is this one we need to, it, this feels to me sort of defunct these days. I'm open to whether people think that, I don't know
I don't remember.
If it's by ordinance, by charter, by
I don't think it's by
I'm not a big fan of continuing committees that don't meet, and this one doesn't. Not because there isn't a good need for a strong relationship with the schools, but because we have it, and maybe that's why this was created long ago. Let's skip this one for now, and Dan, if you come back and tell us we have to do something with it, we will. The Finance Committee, which is currently Pollocka and Piana.
I enjoy being on the Finance Committee. I like looking at what bills we're paying.
You know, I'm open if someone else is interested, but I'll stay.
Anyone else interested in being on the Finance?
I wouldn't mind if you don't mind, if you're not passionate about it, I'll trade you one down the line.
Okay. I'll swap you that committee.
All right.
The Ever-Popular Highway Committee, which has no one on it, because this is another one that doesn't meet, and so I, Dan, I'd ask you to do the same thing, just look into whether or not that's still a
I'm shirking away into the corner on that one.
A required thing. But the Liquor License Review Committee, Councilman Pollocka currently serves on that. Who's interested in that?
I don't mind staying on the committee. The thing is, is we haven't even met probably in two years, or maybe a year and a half. Well, because, because we haven't had a lot of new liquor licenses come into the city, so Of course, once we get that parking, I'm sorry, the DOT built, that could all change.
So Pollocka, I'm hearing, is anyone else?
Keep it.
All right. Ordinance Committee is currently Pollocka and Martin.
I love the ordinance committee.
I'm happy to continue to serve on the ordinance committee.
And I'm interested in getting on the ordinance committee.
Okay.
You can take my spot.
What?
Well, there's only two spots, so you can, we can trade, rotate.
Cool. Okay. The Planning Commission?
That's me, and I'd like to continue to serve there.
Is there any other interest in serving on the Planning Commission? All right. The Police and Fire Retirement, the Police and Fireman, Fire Retirement System, which by the way, meets in, in, what's the word I'm looking for? At the same time
Concurrently.
Concurrently is the word I'm looking for, Marnie, thank you, with me and currently Councilman Martin. Anyone interested, anyone else?
I'd like to stay, just because, you're right, it meets at the same time as the other.
All right. The Sidewalk Hardship Committee.
Well, that's the meeting, that's the committee that I was a part of, but never went to a meeting, so, never had a meeting, so Unless somebody wants to really go after it, I will happy, happy to remain.
So you.
So you, all right. SMCOG, which is currently Martin and Lynch as an alternate.
I'll be honest with you, I have not been able to engage in this space at all, so I will gladly give it up to somebody who may be regionally oriented.
Who could that be?
I think this is the committee swap, but it also is alignment with the Michigan Municipal League stuff that I'm participating in in the next year and a half, so it makes, it makes more logistical sense. I do want to put on here, though, it's not a technical, formal committee, but council has to appoint an MML delegate every year to their conferences, and while I'm filling that role in now, that won't always be the case.
Yeah, we could put it here, we've put it on the agenda tracker now for before the conference, but it might make sense to actually put it on this list.
To do it at the beginning of the year. That means you would actually have to go to the conference to be the delegate.
Which is why we, which is why I think we've done it right before it happened, to make sure we know who is going, so
Yeah, we might want to hold it.
But a good point.
Yeah, we put it on the agenda tracker for, I think, a couple months before the, before the conference.
Thank you.
Then we also have for sort of liaison, liaisons to various commissions in the city. The first one being the Liaison to the Arts and Culture Commission, which is currently Councilman Martin.
Yeah, I'd like to retain that. We're midstream on some really exciting things I'll be talking about in the near future, so I'd like to see those through.
Anyone else have an interest?
Arts and Culture.
Oh, oh, sorry, I got to scroll.
Do we need to do the, there's a DDA alternate in that middle section.
Oh, I'm working off the agenda, but hang on to it.
Yeah, right now it's me, but I'm willing to give that up if someone wants it.
I'll take it.
I don't even see it, oh, here it is.
It's way in the far corner.
There you go. Yeah, 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 okay. Liaison to the Beautification Commission. Who, oh, and it is currently Councilwoman Leaks May. Is that something you're still interested in doing, or are you looking for someone else?
I was actually going to look at a different commission.
I'll take it. When people think of beauty, they think of me.
I always do. The Liaison to the Environmental Sustainability Commission, which is currently you.
You know, I love that commission, but I'm more than willing to, if anybody wanted to swap, however, I would be really sad not work with our environmental planner for the first time, so I'm just putting it out there. So what would, who took beautification?
I did.
So Parks and Rec and environmental.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, so what am I hearing about environmental?
So you're interested in environmental?
I'm interested in environmental, and since we're talking, you mentioned Parks and Rec, I've been on Parks and Rec for four years. and Rec, I've been on Parks and Rec for four years, and, and I am willing to let someone else come on and, and enjoy helping to redevelop our parks, if, if someone else would like to do that.
I'm fine, I've been on the Environmental Sustainability Commission for, I think, six or seven years, so more than happy to switch.
All right. And Parks and Rec Commission.
I'm interested in Parks and Rec.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
That's fine, I don't have to do any of them. I'm doing the regional statewide stuff.
So Leaks May?
SMCOG is going to be a lot of work, so.
Well, if anybody needed an alternate for your commissions, please call on me.
Excellent. And if you're following at home and you think the mayor hasn't taken enough, the DDA, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, the Woodrow Avenue Action Association, the Agenda Committee and the Retirement Boards are all by virtue of office, so I don't have a choice, not that I'm not glad to serve.
So just to summarize, Raylon, just want to make sure, you want to be on two commissions?
I'm actually on...
I'm on two.
Oh, you're...
Great. Dan. So that's why, I mean, if you felt, you know, like...
Well, no, you're on three, you have the Planning Commission, too.
Oh, yeah, but that was a whole different section of the group.
Okay.
In terms of liaisons to community commissions, he has two.
I'm comfortable unless you want to, I feel strongly about keeping arts, if you want beautification.
Beautification?
I'm happy to do it.
I'll, I'll let Martin continue on, and if something changes for you and you need to balance time?
Sure.
Come talk to me.
Will do. Thank you.
All right, so let me recap. We said Leaks May for Agenda Committee, Board of Zoning Appeal, Pollocka, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Piana, Capital Improvement Committee, Pollocka and Piana, Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees, Martin and Coulter, Ferndale Public Schools, we're going to skip for now, Finance Committee, Pollocka and Martin, skip the Highway Committee, Liquor License Review Committee is Pollocka, the Ordinance Committee, Pollocka and Leaks May, Planning Commission, Martin, Police and Fire Retirement System, again, myself and Martin, Sidewalk, Sidewalk Hardship Committee, Leaks May, SMCOG, Piana, Liaison to Arts and Culture, Martin, Liaison to Beautification, Martin, Liaison to Environmental Sustainability Commission, Pollocka, and Liaison to Parks and Rec, Leaks May. Did I capture that accurately?
Yes.
All right, so we would need a motion, then.
I'd move that we do what you just said. Yeah.
I'd support that.
I like that just in general, why don't we just have a motion to do it?
Yeah, no specific to the agenda item listed in regular Agenda Three.
I got you.
On page forty-nine of the packet.
All right, further discussion. Appreciate everyone's willingness to serve. Sometimes people at home don't realize it, in addition to coming to these meetings and going to the community events, we work behind the scenes in a lot of different ways. It's a lot of work that's mostly unheralded, but I appreciate all of your efforts, so thank you. All right, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. And our final regular agenda item this evening is Item D, the consideration of a small winemaker's license for Urban Rest Brewing Company at 2615 Walcott.
There's two agenda items left.
Oh, did I, oh.
There's another page.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we don't want to forget Joe's like, "What?"
Tabled again.
Sorry, Joe, didn't mean to give you a heart attack. Jordan, you want to take this item?
Sure. Mayor Council, so this item, as you correctly stated, is requesting a small winemaker license for Urban Rest Brewing Company located at 2615 Walcott. So what this will allow them to do is to produce not more than 50,000 gallons in a single year. These don't require a public hearing, but we have them before you today. We have some, we have folks from Urban Rest here as well, that if you'd like to speak to the owners directly, learn a little bit more about the operations, they're here, but it's generally straightforward and the main details were in your packet, but we're here for questions.
Excellent. And I know this isn't a public hearing, but is there anyone here, because I said when we get to this portion of the agenda, you can speak to us, statewide to address council on this item? All right, I would open it up to councils for your questions, your questions of clarification or a motion. Then we can get to comments and all that good stuff.
I would say that the explanation was pretty clear, and it was interesting finding out the difference between a winemaker and a small winemaker, the differences, so.
I feel bad making you sit through the meeting, though.
Through the chair, can you just explain how this changes, can you still BYOB your own wine, or could you bring food? I can't, I can never remember the legal...
We don't allow bring your own wine as it currently stands, so we've had a lot of customers ask us about wine. We're only able to produce or sell products that we produce, rather, so this allows us to service another part of our clientele. So we don't plan to let them bring in any wine at that point either.
And did I, I'll go ahead. And did I read that you're also able to sell your product in local venues around the area? Should this go through?
Yes, yes, we, we hold a microbrewery license, which allows that to do, us to do that with our beer as well. The wine license will allow us to do that, but we are at a very small capacity. We intend to produce probably about 100 to 200 gallons of wine. A hundred percent of that will be in our taproom, at least for the short, near short term.
I was just going to mention to, to touch on Councilwoman Piana's point about bring your own bottle of wine. If I'm not mistaken, and Chief can confirm this, there isn't a license that allows you to bring your own wine. A lot of these establishments that let you do it, it's actually against the law. And I didn't realize that till a friend of mine who owned a business was allowing people to do it, and a certain chief happened to come in one night and say, "What's going on?"
Chief trying to...
And kind of put a stop to it.
Clarifying that?
That is correct. You, you may not bring wine in, charge a corking fee or any of that, that is prohibited by Michigan state law. It is not covered by the LCC because the LCC only covers licensed establishments. So if he becomes a licensed establishment, he has to abide by those rules at that time. So there is no bring your own alcohol to any establishment whatsoever.
Great clarification, yep. Good to know. Thank you. All right, we, a motion would be in order before we have more discussion.
I would say, I move that we recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval for the request of Urban Rest Brewing Company for a new small winemaker license to be located at 2615 Walcott Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, any other comments, questions?
Not a comment, but I have a very important question, and that is, who is making your pierogi for your January eighteenth event?
So a very close friend of ours, my wife and I, I went to high school with actually Erica Petrick. She's 100% Polish, she does an incredible job, she usually brings four or 500 pierogis, and she's been selling out pretty much every time, so.
I'm looking forward to it.
Absolutely, thank you. And I guess on that note, I just want to say thank you on behalf of my wife and I, and then the company for the warm reception we've received by everyone in Ferndale, by the police department that circles around all the time, all hours of the night, when we're closing up, protecting our staff and everything, so thank you, we appreciate it.
Well, we wish you continued success.
Thank you very much.
It's been a great business, and we're happy that you're here.
Thank you.
And I'm putting a plug in for a nice Cabernet.
Cabernet, Mary?
All right, you heard that? All right, I'm with you.
I second that.
I like a good Cabernet, I saw, thank you. Awesome. All right, final questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and support. Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Now, Joe, Item E, I didn't go to my second page, sorry about that, the consideration of Passport Parking Software Services Agreement.
So, okay, this is an extension of a recommendation that was presented in the previous meeting. There is some language that was added that really flushes out the phasing of the project. So the phased implementation, which we discussed at the prior meeting, is more fleshed out here. So I want to clarify, what we're talking about is bringing in three components of software under one umbrella, under Passport Parking. What I'm recommending is essentially launching this in two phases. The first phase is the priority phase for us, which would, if this were to be approved, we would hit the ground running and implement parking enforcement and digital permitting for the business community. Right away with Passport Parking, we would engage them right away, because the priority is to fix the enforcement citations solutions for our parking enforcement officers and for the Forty-third District Court to replace that legacy system right away. We believe that can be achieved within the first sixty days, so that's January through March 2018, we'd focus on that. The next phase we would focus on would be converting the mobile pay. So we would transition the current mobile pay system, which has been Park Mobile, that was established in 2011 with the DDA. We would transition from Park Mobile to Passport Parking. That would complete the final component of the software and put everything under the same system. We would do that, though, concurrently. So we talked to Passport Parking over the past few weeks, and they've, they've done this with, I think they said thirty other cities. So they've done this before, they've converted several other cities who've been on Park Mobile over to Passport Parking, and they call it a concurrent rollout. So to give you some background, we are under agreement with Park Mobile right now through July first. We have to give sixty days' notice to Park Mobile before that agreement expires. So my intent would be to give Park Mobile notice that we would like to cancel the agreement within sixty days of the contract. If we were to do that, I would propose that we would engage a soft rollout with Passport Parking between April and July, and we would roll out the new Passport Parking signage and can begin to convert new customers and roll over existing customers to the Passport software while still offering the current Park Mobile solution. So we would have two solutions going concurrently throughout the April through July period. We would leverage Park Mobile's marketing street team, and we would leverage Park Mobile's communications, marketing team and their experience to help convert the communications implementation. And they have the experience to do that and the wherewithal to do that. If we do not do that, if we do not communicate within the sixty days, our agreement with Park Mobile just automatically renews for another year, in which case we would defer the extension to Passport, because I think that's still the right decision to make, to unify the systems. We would just defer that decision another year.
And I'm sorry, what'd you say the deadline is to communicate to?
Within sixty days of the agreement. So within sixty days that our agreement currently expires, actually, I'm sorry, it's June first, it's June first.
June first?
Not July first, it's June first.
Oh, it expires June first.
It expires June first, so I would have to give them within sixty days, yeah.
April first.
Which is why April is my time clock, that's why I am.
Gotcha. All right, questions of council?
Just comments, I appreciate you coming back and addressing the concerns and issues we raised last time.
Sure.
I know you would have preferred, we passed it back then, but I feel more comfortable about it today.
It makes, it makes sense, and I'm glad I actually did the time to do the homework with Passport Parking about this, too, so.
Through the chair, I'm with Councilman Martin, thank you for taking the time to sort of lay out the path forward, and I do request some sort of written support from the DDA, because I do know that there has been concern about switching during perhaps a construction phase from systems, and even though that they've expressed support verbally, just have it somehow documented in some way, right?
Yeah, we'll give you a little bit of background, we presented this, this process to the DDA Board in October, said, in terms of the RFP and the proposal process, they were aware of the, the direction, and they, they had voiced their preference towards Passport Parking in the past. But to your point, I understand the sensitivity to minimizing business disruption during any development process. So our intent is to present to the DDA Board an update this Thursday pending council approval. So this Thursday at their board meeting, they'll be getting an update from me in terms of our intention with Passport Parking, then we'll be presenting to them, again, with Passport Parking in February at their board meeting, our intentions in terms of communications and marketing, how to transition between April and July, to see how they respond to that. And to give them that opportunity to respond to that, we would again come back with a more fleshed out marketing campaign in March, because the, what we're proposing is in April, and then we would present that at City Council of the Republic in March as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Let me make myself more clear. I just want to make sure that this is a city-led project with support, partnership support from the DDA, but at the end of the day, the DDA is expressing, the businesses on the DDA are expressing support to move forward that impacts other businesses, and so I just wanted to make it sure that we had that partnership or that direction and recommendation as part of marketing, that businesses have chosen to go down this path with us at this time. If the DDA, for example, if the DDA said, "No, this is not the right time," we would probably have said, "Okay, when's the right time? When should we do it?" Right? And so we would have taken their lead. So I just want to make sure that we have some sort of support from, I know there's, what am I trying to say? That there's written or a resolution saying that the businesses are making this recommendation on behalf of the business of the downtown, that this is the right time to do it.
Would a vote in their...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, through the chair, that would, would a vote, and reflection of such a vote in their minutes accomplish what you're hoping to accomplish?
I think so.
Okay.
But I, what's important for me, that the perception is that the city isn't doing this to our downtown, that there's a well-thought-out vetting process here.
Sure.
That the business community has said, "Yes, go forth and we'll be great partners with you." And I'm taking extra precaution because this is a sensitive topic.
That makes sense.
Right? For, for all stakeholders involved.
Through the chair, Mayor Pro Tem, you're not proposing that it's contingent on that?
No, I'm just, I just want a written statement of support.
All right.
I'd also like to add that we just had a meeting earlier, a workshop on special events, and this, this falls just before the event season, and it's probably going to be wise for us to work very closely with especially the June and July event promoters, to make them aware of this change and how it's going to impact people coming into the city. Because my fear is, is that it gets rolled out just before, an example, Pride, and then you have 10,000 people coming into the city all going, "How do I use the system?"
Yep, and we believe that's the actual marketing opportunity for us.
Yeah, I was about to say, it's, I take the opposite side of the coin, I think it's a fantastic opportunity.
Agree, agree. I just want to, we need to be aware that we're, we're putting this out at that period of time, so we need to make it, we need to make it, you know...
And we do have all of the subscriber contact information for Park Mobile that we can communicate to download this new, you know, go to the new app for the city of Ferndale, Ferndale. So we have that three-month soft-launch period between April to July to kind of roll over and convert them and update them on this new information. But we do believe that Passport provides a significantly vast improvement of business support services over Park Mobile that we think the businesses will benefit from during construction period as well.
And just to confirm, this, is it going to have any issue with our staffing, for example, through Republic or through city staff? We don't have to hire additional people to deal with this?
No, this will actually improve their, this will improve their efficiency significantly by homogenizing our systems.
Excellent.
Other comments?
Well, actually, we don't have a motion, so technically, other questions or a motion?
I move to approve the software license and service agreement with Passport Parking, funds to be paid from the Auto Parking Fund, account number 585-000-818-000, and an amount, an annual amount of $18,000.
Support.
Supported by Paulica, supported by Martin. Now, any discussion, other additional discussion or question, comments?
I am interested in knowing the cost. I read all the general terms of this contract. I did. Because I wanted to know what they could possibly ask us for additional fees for, and a lot of it is marketing, so having that breakdown going forward with some transition will be helpful.
Yep. If there's any additional marketing fees, we'll be able to bring that back to council as part of a change order. So especially prior to any rollout, we would bring that back as a change order. That would also be an opportunity to educate the public as part of the marketing strategy.
And then, I guess I should have asked this before the motion, but it also said in there that the provider was responsible for changing over all the signs and stuff, and I thought at the last meeting, when the CEO was here, he mentioned that they were going to be responsible for.
Passport is responsible for providing the updated signage.
Okay. I think there's an item in the general terms that says we're responsible for all that. I can't find it, but you should take a.
We had those communications, I was under the same understanding as whatever he expressed in the public minutes.
We'll double-check.
But we will double-check with Dan.
Yeah, no, it says there that provider, because I had to go back and look, I go, "Are we the provider?" Yes, Ferndale's the provider, and it says that we're going to cover all those fees. I may have read it wrong, but please check.
I just found section on page two. Provider will be solely responsible for installing all signs and decals in the premises.
Thank you. So that is different from what we were told by the CEO.
This obligation includes the responsibility to provide all hardware necessary to affix and display signs and decals within, including without limitation, all hooks, poles, posts, brackets, screws, bolts, on and on and on.
We will be talking with them tomorrow.
Should we try, I mean?
Make that contingent?
Is there contingency language?
What page, Greg, were you reading?
It is page two. It's right at the top in the section that says installation. It says, the top of the page says.
Installing signs in the premises. So, Joe, is it your understanding they're providing the design file to provide replacement signs and decals? But they are supposed to provide the installation of those signs and decals in the first instance?
In the initial, at the initial crossover installation, I believe, so.
Yeah, well, then.
That's going to be a phone call tomorrow.
That should be, any approval of council should be contingent on that being modified by the contractor.
There's a section below that says ancillary fees, initial signs and stickers waived.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Ancillary fees.
Zone setup fees.
That says.
Signs and stickers. It doesn't talk about posts and brackets and screws and nuts and hooks and.
It doesn't, the language doesn't cover installation.
We'll confirm it with him tomorrow.
We'll have to confirm that tomorrow, labor installation, yep.
Yep. And then I have one request. Can you make the zone number bigger?
We're actually going to be overhauling, updating the citywide signs as part of the CIP project.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's just part of an annual update.
Actually, QR codes on each sign would be nice.
All right. It was moved by Paulica. I'm sorry, who did, was there support?
Martin.
Martin's support. I apologize, I didn't write that down. Moved by Paulica, supported by Martin. Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
Mayor, are you making that a contingency, that that installation provision be?
Are you comfortable with that? That this is contingent on?
Yes, on the installation costs.
On those fees being waived, those construction costs being waived for the signs? I'm looking at you, Joe. Do you think that's going to be an issue?
I'm comfortable with bringing that back as a change order because if that's not waived, I don't know what the cost is going to be for that. So I'm not comfortable with promising you that's going to be a zero cost, right? That's going to be a different cost, so.
Right.
And I don't know what that cost would be.
And I'm not sure how to reword the.
I'd keep the contingent there, and I hate to do this to you. If it's an issue, bring it back. I'm sorry.
That means it's a whole other conversation.
I'm comfortable with approving the first two because they're priority items that are separate from that piece.
That's a good catch, yeah.
You can still say contingent, and if it's not, he's got to come back anyway with an adjustment.
It may give you a leveraging, too, on that conversation tomorrow.
Right.
Yes, you could still make a contingent, but know that if it's not, he still has to come back no matter what to get it adjusted.
Right.
Yep.
Because he would have to come back. So Councilman Paulica, is that an acceptable amendment to your motion?
Yes, it is.
That it's contingent upon the fees for the installation? And Martin, your?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Does that make sense, Dan, then? Is that acceptable?
It does. So the installation provisions of paragraph two would be the obligation of Passport. It's contingent on them agreeing to absorb those costs.
Yes. All right. With that, any further last discussion? Marty, will you call the role, please?
She's ready to know that.
I know, actually. We'll get it for you.
Councilmembers, Paulica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Zixmay?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Proctor?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Joe. That concludes our regular agenda. So the next item of business would be called to council. Chief, anything for the good of the community from the police department this evening, other than the great stuff you already brought us?
Just one thing, Your Honor, we wanted to publicly thank Beth Abraham Cemetery again, last year unsolicited. They sent us a letter with a check for a bulletproof vest for a new officer that we thanked them publicly then, and then again unsolicited. We just received a letter and a check from them again, again thanking us for our service, and they could not think of a more sincere expression of their appreciation or gratitude for our daily service, and they provided again a check for us to purchase another body armor for our new officers.
Excellent.
So I just wanted to say thank you to them and their board of directors. It was very kind of them to do so again.
Indeed. Thank you. Very generous. Barry, anything from the DDA this evening that you'd like to share? Happy New Year, sir.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say thank you to Michael Hennes and to Jay McMillan, two board members that served. I know Michael was the immediate past chair before Dean, and they termed out and are no longer on the DDA Board. We're going to miss them, and I just want to thank them for their service. We are looking around for new DDA Board members, so open suggestions, taking some names. We have a few in mind, but just wanted to put that out there and say Happy New Year, and look forward to seeing you hopefully at our planning session coming up on Thursday, the 25th, right here in council chambers at 6 o'clock.
The 25th at 6 o'clock. I think I know that, but.
Yep. The DDA Board has requested that it be more brief than previous years, which I don't blame them. So this will be a quick kind of dust-off. Some of the work will be done beforehand by our committees that they'll be bringing forward, and hope to see you there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Jenny, thank you. So I know you don't always like to get up, but Jenny, our library director is here, and she's provided us with a plethora of events and cool things happening at the library. I would encourage you, because I'm not going to embarrass her and put her on the spot, to go to the library's website because all of these are there, and there's just a lot of good stuff happening at the library this month. So great to see you, Jenny. Thank you. Marina, anything from the recreation department this evening?
No, I don't need to.
All right. Jordan, anything else from community and economic development?
Nothing else, I think.
All right. Chief, anything for the fire department for the good of the community?
Mr. Mayor, council, as you know, Fire Marshal Batten has officially retired. He won't be off the books till the end of the month, but he is now with the state of Michigan and doing the whole east side of Detroit and east side Wayne County. So we are working diligently with the union and getting ready to test and replace his position. In the meantime, we have three new people that we hope to be bringing on shortly. The police are diligently working on background investigations and that, so that'll be started, and we're also starting our next list because with all the retirements, we're now two more positions in the hole than we were when we started all these retirements and that. So we're running short right now, but we're working on replacing everybody, and it looks like we have some competent people coming in. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, sir. All right. I'm going to skip you for now. We're going to let April introduce you and let you off the hook on your first day of work. Kara, anything for communications and community engagement this evening?
Skip finance. Oh. Skip finance.
Huh? Oh, you see? I'll get to you.
She wanted you to skip her.
I'm so sorry. I did. Getting ahead of myself.
Hello, I'm up here just to let you know that the newsletter is officially back. Yay! So I know Greg's been asking about it. So I appreciate your patience. I just wanted to give you a little sneak peek. It is officially published online using our publication site issue, so we'll be sharing it digitally tomorrow. It's printing today, and it's expected to hit mailboxes, I'm sorry, it's expected to go to the post office Wednesday, should be hitting mailboxes next week. So similar to what you have seen in the past with a spread of information here about our city council and goings-on in the city, note from the mayor. And then we have added a new spread that offers all of the upcoming programs, classes, and activities through Parks and Recreation, which we think is a great new use of this space. And the plan will be to release this three times a year versus four, since it's going to be a little bit bigger. So we're going to do winter, which we're obviously doing right now. We'll do a spring and summer, which will be a bigger addition with all of those summer programs and courses that plans to come out in April, and then we'll be doing a fall addition. So that's it.
Can't wait. Great job. Thanks, Kara.
Through the chair, Kara, I was just wondering, do our, I remember a couple years back, our state representative, Robert Wittenberg, his assistant, asking me if there was some way for them to get information as far as what events were happening in the city. So is this sent to them as, I mean, our local?
It's actually not, no. It goes only to residents, basically every household in the city. So, but that's a great suggestion. It's certainly something that we could come up with a mailing list, either do print mailing or digital mailing to stakeholders.
They would like that, yeah. That's a great idea. I've heard that as well. Thank you. Excellent. Cheryl, I'm so sorry, I don't know how I skipped you, but finances is the bedrock of all that we do, so. Good evening.
Just wanted to give you an update on the water billing issues that we had between Christmas and New Year's. We sent water bills out to about 3,600 residents, and we had an issue with about 10 of the water bills, but they, a couple of them were pretty significant. So probably between eight and 10. Had an issue with the ready-to-serv charge. That's the line on the water bill that says MO. It's a $29 fee that we pay every quarter for the ready-to-serv. What we had done is we were prorating that fee, but when we have instances where we have tenants and in a situation where the tenants are leaving but the owner is not changing, the program wasn't working right. So we decided to stop prorating that fee, and that'll make that go away. And that was about 10 of the accounts that had a large ready-to-serv charge because of the proration snafu. We did have one isolated incident where we had a meter changed out, and when the meter was put in, it was reading, it read very high, and that resident got an extremely high water bill. So what we're doing is we put another step in our process to look at those reads before we actually put them through our billing software, to make sure that we catch and investigate any of those really high reads before we go ahead and process a bill for those. Again, that was one isolated incident, but it was a significantly high bill. We've done a couple of other things. We have a form that we've put online that will allow residents to go online and fill out this form any time of the day, 24 hours. If they have any billing inquiries or usage inquiries or anything like that, it'll go to the water department billing staff, and they can investigate it and reach back out to the residents. So they don't have to wait and try and get ahold of us. They can actually go online, fill out this form, ask their questions, and then we can get back to them the next day that we're in the office. I think that's going to help people. It's going to, it's, we're going to be more accessible. We're still going to be able to answer it the next business day. I think we're giving like 48 hours to respond to those issues. And lastly, we're going to look at when we send the water bills out. Unfortunately, when these 10 items went out, it was at the end of the Christmas holiday, so then the offices were closed for five days, and people did not have the ability to get ahold of a person and speak to them, and I'm sure that that exasperated some of the issues that we had. So when we have those kind of things coming up, we're going to postpone the billings so that when they go out, we know that within at least the next couple of days, there'll be people in the office that can address any issues that people have.
Questions of council, because I know this was an issue. I appreciate your thorough investigation and response to it, but does anyone have any questions to show?
No.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Joe, anything from Assistant City Manager's Office this evening? Nothing this evening. Marty, anything from the City Clerk's Office this evening?
Well, with all the talks about boards and commissions, I'll jump on, just a reminder that we do have vacancies on some of our boards and commissions, and we were happy to have people apply. We currently have openings on the Brownfield Development Authority, Board of Review, DDA, Parks and Rec Commission, and the Sidewalk Hardship Committee, and the application is available on the City Clerk's site.
If I may, with the Sidewalk Hardship Committee, if I'm not mistaken, we need a representative from each quadrant.
Correct. We currently have one. So we are looking for residents in the northwest, northeast, and southwest quadrants of the city to serve on the Sidewalk Hardship Committee.
Okay, you have someone. I think it's Todd Blakey's ship on southeast. Okay.
All right. April, anything from the City Manager's Office? Any new hires or anything?
A couple things, actually. Two big announcements.
All right.
The first announcement that I have is we are finally pleased to announce we have a new department, our Director of Human Resources. His name is Dan J.C. He just started today, so we like to baptize him by fire. So he is a, not only a Western Michigan grad, but a EMU grad with a master's degree. He's got, you have 30 years' worth of HR experience. 25 of them have been in hospitality, which is very much aligned with what we do here. He's a ton of experience in not only in benefit management, but organizational development and culture, and knows so much about HR that he's actually an instructor for getting your HR certification. So we're very excited to have him on board, just started today, and just extremely happy to get that position filled. So Dan, welcome to our team, and I don't know if you wanted to say a couple of things.
Welcome, Dan. Anything you want to share? That'd be great.
Thank you. I'm not sure what to add, but I'm very excited to be the Human Resources Director for the city of Ferndale, and my door is always open, and I look forward to working with you all.
Awesome. Welcome aboard. Appreciate it. Great.
I have one more other exciting announcement, and I was given the opportunity to be able to talk about this today. We have our quiet zones. They are official. I just want to make it a couple of our community aware a little bit further of what a quiet zone is. A quiet zone does not mean a no horn. It means significant reduction in the horns. It's important to note that during bad weather, in particular fog or snow, you may hear them a little bit more because the whole purpose is that, the purpose of the horn is to make people aware that they're coming through. And when, we changed some of the intersections to make that more accessible to protect the lane, to allow, you know, cars to be able to understand and know that they're still, the train is still coming, but you're not going to hear the horn. So when weather becomes difficult or the conductor feels that there might be something in the way, such as a person, an animal, or some, maybe a piece of garbage, like a large box, something fell on there, it's their due diligence to make sure that they sound the horn to ensure that there is safety. So again, in talking to CN, they have worked with their employees. They are aware, they've went through the process with their employees, that they are aware that Ferndale is now a quiet zone. So that was one of the questions we did ask, is have you talked to your team about that? And they made it very clear that they have. So let's, just, it became official December 29th. Please know again, if, you know, if you hear it once or once in a while, that's normal. If you do feel like it's excessive, please contact the CED Department so that we can work with CN to find out what's going on with the continued horn. So yay, it's been like two and a half, three years we've been working on this. been working on this, let's give it some time, but at the end of the day, if you do hear it being as excessive or continues to be excessive, please let us know, but it's important to note that you should see a diminished sound of the horn, but not completely gone, so we'll just kinda have to keep that in mind.
Congratulations, that was a long time in coming.
I'm just gonna high-five all of us.
I know.
Lot of work.
Big shout-out, though, to the CED team in particular, Jordan, to kind of finishing that out, and to our DPW team who worked with our consultants, and honestly, CN has been very helpful in helping us navigate that promise that they gave us, so thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Letters are going out, I think, to residents and people near, and giving general commentary on that they can expect that now, in particular for those people that are along the line.
Can, can you send us a copy, it can just be electronic of that letter, just so we know what the communications is, it doesn't have to be print, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Carol, get that out, right? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Dan?
Very briefly, Your Honor, a couple of months ago, I indicated that state law had changed regarding alcohol offenses specifically with minors as it relates to the consequences. The ordinance committee will be hopefully finalizing a draft recommendation for ordinance amendments, and that item hopefully will be coming to council at the meeting on the 22nd.
Excellent, good, thank you.
Councilman Martin? Two things, one, I just want to extend my congratulations to my colleagues who were sworn in tonight, so truly is a great council, and I'm excited about the next couple of years. And also, secondly, another great organization I get to work with is Ferndale Youth Assistance, and they're big fundraiser of the year, one of their big ones is coming up, January 26th to February 3rd is the return of the Ferndale Blues and Music Festival. Multiple menus, every, venues, and menus, I suppose, every night to, opportunity to enjoy some really great music and feed the pig, as they say, collecting money supporting Ferndale Youth Assistance. And if you don't know what Ferndale Youth Assistance does, they have a variety of programs that help youth, from education programs to entire families, to they send a significant number of kids to camp every year as well, it's just a great organization, and they're housed right out of the high school. So, to get a full lineup of the venues this year, their website is www.ferndalebluesfestival.org, so I'd encourage you all to go out again, that's January 26th through February 3rd. Thanks.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Well, first, I wanted to congratulate Fire Marshal Batten and thank him for his service, so want to extend that to him. Second, I want to, second, Dan's, Councilman Martin's appreciation to all of you for all of your service that you provide, it's great working with you all. I also want to say that congratulations to all who have taken up, taken on new roles, and looking forward to a great 2018, the productive work among all of you.
Pigeon Lord. Pigeon Lord. Thank you. Councilman Pollocka?
I echo you both on congratulating my fellow council members and mayor on their reelections and their reappointments, and I look forward to working with all of you. We are very fortunate to have this council, and to be able to work together as we do in meeting other communities and other community leaders, they tend to share about how they have issues with working with other people, and thankfully, we don't, and that's why we're able to get so much done. But, so I wish you all well for the next year, and something that I'm gonna start doing in this term is putting myself in a public position, a public location once a month, and allowing people to come and talk to me. A lot of people can't get to our council meetings, and a lot of people aren't comfortable talking in public because of their schedules. So I am gonna be on Wednesday, January 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., I'm gonna be at Dino's, come talk to me, share a beer, chat about what issues you might have, or what concerns you might have, but again, that's Wednesday, the 24th of January.
Excellent.
That's it?
Yeah, great. Yes, and Councilwoman Piana?
Just wanted to say I look forward to the next engaging four years, every four years, there's been like a major shift in what this council has focused on, mostly from external factors in which we're responding to, but the next four years, I, I'm just really positive feelings and direction of what we're going to tackle, and it's really exciting. You know, my first time on here was cutting and cutting, as most people who got elected in the, in the 2009, 10 years, and so, those were some hard years, and I'm just really looking forward to, hoping for not another recession. And, but just moving forward on implementing, a lot of ideas and interests that our residents have expressed as articulated in our strategic plan and our master plan, and to me, that's the exciting part. The hard and fun work is ahead of us, and I'm grateful, like Pollocka, just to have, I call this the team, and the team to me is a great council and a great city administration, and that's how we are able to get things done, and how I talk about ourselves together, like, I go, it's the council team, and we all pull our weight and focus on what we need, and that's one of the reasons this job has been so enjoyable, and so I just wanted to express my gratitude and thankfulness that we work that way together. Other than that, I do not have anything else for tonight, so.
Right. And I will just say, very briefly, as I said before, I really appreciate working with all of you, and I look forward to a productive and successful term, truly is the reason I ran again, is to get the opportunity to work with a great group of folks, and I want to extend that net to our staff, who I don't think our residents always know, I mean, you're engaged with some of them on specific issues, but I don't think our residents truly appreciate the talented group of people that we have working here at City Hall, you saw some of them in our police department, in our fire department here at City Hall, in our DPW, and in every aspect of this city, we couldn't, we get the credit for the good work that they all do, so I really appreciate you. And then finally, I just wanted to say, wearing a bow tie is not the norm for me, but I'm gonna put in a shameless plug for a cause that I feel very passionately about, which is kids with cancer, and this is a bow tie, and there's also a woman scarf that looks exactly the same, it was designed by a child at Children's Hospital of Michigan who has cancer, and we turned him into a bow tie and a scarf to help fund programs that fight cancer in kids, and if you're interested in having your own bow tie or scarf, you could go to chmfoundation.org and get your own, so plug, plug for the kids with cancer this year. Look forward to a great year, thank you, everybody, and the meeting is adjourned.